[S01]...
You're tired.
I've taken the stuff apart often enough, helping Sharon, and I know where the buttons are.
Okay. You guys ready? Good evening. Selectman meeting for Thursday, August 21st. I want to let everyone know you're being audio and video recorded. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Ben, well, thank you for coming out.
Excellent. Thank you for accommodating my schedule.
Yeah, no problem. So, we did have another candidate that we interviewed the other day when you couldn't make it, but we're happy to hear you were able to readjust the come on out and...
Sounds good. Yeah, I was talking with a select board about this Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust, mid-year rate increase. So maybe we'll talk a little bit more about that later on.
All right.
Do you all have copies of my resume, my cover letter, and my references?
Yes.
Yes.
I believe we have the references as well. So, I think each one of us will just have a couple of questions for you and then...
Sure. Well, I want to be fair and start this out the same way that we did our other interviews, so...
The interview questions are on the last page.
Just give me a chance and I'll get to that.
Yep.
We're gonna follow the exact procedure we did the other day.
Okay.
Yep. So... If you wouldn't mind by standing out, just telling us a little about yourself.
Absolutely. So, my name is Ben. I've been doing this work since I finished my graduate school. I enrolled my grad school specifically with the intention of going to work in a government, and then I applied for jobs with the federal government, and I applied for jobs in the state government, and I waited and waited and waited, and I didn't hear anything, and the town next to me was hiring an assistant treasurer. So I applied to that, they called me the next day to set up an interview, and they called me the day after that to offer me the job. And that set me on this path. And I will say I'm grateful that it worked out that way. What I enjoy about local government is that I can have a direct and immediate impact on people's lives and on their well-being. I know, I don't do a whole lot as the treasurer, but I think that facilitating the front of the house, things which the town hall offers is important. I, if you'll bear with me for a bit of a story, I grew up in Northampton, and I was fifth generation in that town. And I grew up in the house that my mother grew up in, next door to where my grandfather grew up or my great-grandparents still lived. And we used to have these huge family gatherings. We'd have forty, fifty people come, all these McGinnises who lived in Northampton. And when my brother and I graduated high school, my family looked around and we realized that we were the last ones, the last McGinnises still living in Northampton. Everybody else had been kind of priced out by the increased cost of living, they'd all moved to, you know, Southampton, East Hampton. And I found that to be very disappointing, that a family that's been in a town for five generations could no longer continue to afford to live there. And it was around that time that I was reviewing the Northampton budget, just as a high school kid, I didn't know a lot at the time, and they were considering a process two and a half override. And it looked to me like the way that they were structuring it was to refill the stabilization accounts, but they were phrasing it as, "We need to do this to get more money to the schools." And I remember thinking at the time that that didn't seem fair or right, and, you know, it's been many, many years, looked at those numbers, I could have misinterpreted them, but that is what set me down this path. So my goal is always to offset my salary by bringing in more money. I've done that in every town I've worked for. My goal is to not only keep a close eye on the finances of the town, but to advocate for responsibility, just to try to keep the tax rate down. I know that it's a relatively small part of the cost of living in these towns, but to me, that's important.
Great answer. Yeah, I like it.
Thank you.
Sarah, Beth, who would like to go next? Do you want to break them up evenly and go down the line, or do you want to ask the same question you asked? They're all in, pretty much in order of how they were. If you have a preference.
Well, he talked a little bit about himself, but, and I had originally asked that question regarding, tell us about yourself and your experience. So, you talked a little bit about what set you on this path. Can you talk a little bit about what you've done in the space since you finished your masters and went into the town treasurer, collector, job path?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I covered this a bit in my cover letter, so you'll forgive me if I kind of read from that. In Row, I've increased the investment revenue by about $42,000 a year, caught a fraudulent transaction my predecessor missed for about $10,000, and because I have a very strong relationship with our bank there, Unibank. Unibank actually refunded that to us, even though it was several months after the fact. I also streamlined the payroll process to save the administrative assistant about six hours every pay period. It was the administrative assistant's job to come in and basically key everything into Harper's. In Washington, I increased investment revenue by over $10,000, changed health insurance vendors, saved the town about $13,000 just for a three-member group. In West Stockbridge, it's probably my biggest win, I increased investment revenue by $120,000. It had not been looked at in probably five or six years, and they were now taking advantage of the higher rates that were being offered. In Plainfield, again, increased investment revenue by $45,000, decreased payroll software and debt service costs by a combined $5,000. That's through switching payroll softwares and consolidating the debt. Most recently, I've been in Cheshire, and they called me because the town administrator knew my name, she lives in Row, and my predecessor left without notice. I was in that office less than 48 hours later, and all the tax bills went out on time, our debt was issued on time, we're on track to certify our free cash for fall special town meeting. I separated the position of the treasurer and the tax collector, which is going to save about $90,000 year-over-year by getting rid of two benefited positions and changing them both to part-time. So far, that seems to be working well. I also hired and trained the new tax collector. So that's my list of accomplishments.
Sarah, do you want to go?
What's your experience with Vadar in Harper's?
I've been using Vadar in Harper's for several years.
Okay.
I know both of them very well.
Okay. Do you have any experience with, what is it, Pro something, Pro Forward? Is that what we're switching to for Harper's, Pro Forward?
Employee Forward.
Oh, Employee Forward.
We're switching, so everyone will be inputting their own time.
Sounds good.
Yes.
I have had mixed results with that. I'll tell you that it is more expensive.
It is more expensive, but we are...
We're in dire straits with...
We're doing it, so we're at the end stage of willing to help.
Sounds good. So I have some experience with that.
Okay.
I've been through that implementation process. I've also walked away from it in a town where it was too complicated to be worthwhile. I think paper time sheets usually work. For me, this is one of the ideas I have for Brookfield, I usually use, it's essentially like an employee forward upload file, but I enter in the data, a key in the spreadsheet, use that to double-check that Harper's is right and just download it to the system, rather than clicking through every time, which I think is what you were telling me you wanted to avoid.
So we currently manually enter everyone, which is really due to the school, it's handkeying in the 65 school employees. We do handkey all the town employees as well, but we're switching to employee forward more or less to allow employees to handkey their own time, but to have more of a time sheet tracking system.
Perfect.
That is not on paper.
And are you going to be setting up the Vadar CHIL export?
I don't want to use that.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I think that it's too complicated.
Yeah, I do. I prefer not to use exports when I do my annual wars, so I don't use them.
Sounds good.
Beth, why don't you go to the last question?
Sure.
It's yours anyway, so...
Yeah, so it's kind of a two-part question, so I'd like you to take us to both ends of your professional spectrum.
Sure.
I'd like to know, what's the project or task that you accomplished that you're most proud of, and how you executed it? And then tell us about a time when something that you did with good intent went sideways, and what the learning was from it, and what you would do differently today.
So, for me, it's kind of two sides of the same coin. When I was first starting out, our tax collector left for family reasons, and I thought that I could take on a combined treasurer, tax collector role in that town. And ultimately, it was more work than I bargained for. We tried hiring an assistant, and while she was great, the steps that we had taken to try to streamline the process, setting up a lockbox, encouraging people to pay online, it wasn't enough to offset the kind of person-to-person interactions that make the tax collector job so hard. It is very difficult to be in the back, working as a treasurer, trying to focus on reconciling these kind of larger projects that take focus and time, and to be interrupted every five minutes when you have to walk from back of the office up to the counter, interact with something, and then go back. And I did tell Zepher, look, I was wrong. I made a mistake. I thought I could handle it, I couldn't. They wanted to keep the position combined. Eventually, they took my advice and split it back up. But then, in Cheshire, where I was most recently, I did the exact opposite. I said, "Okay, I know that this combined position is really difficult for one person to do. I know that you've had some turnover in this department, and so what we're gonna do is we're gonna split it up, we're gonna let each person focus on what they're good at, and try to..." The good thing about that was that we hired somebody for the tax collector who lived in town, who everybody knew. That does make it easier to pay taxes, in my opinion. I think if you recognize the face that you're handing your check over to, people are a little bit more willing to do it.
Yeah.
So I'm learning. There's still a lot for me to learn, and I try not to make the same mistake twice.
Thank you.
Perfect. Do you have any questions, other than what you've gone over for Lori or us?
So, I have a whole list of things to talk about, some questions, but also I first want to start with them. Kind of what I can offer versus a, someone who's like a real part-time employee, I check bank accounts every day, and I make sure that I am aware of every transaction that's happening. That is not just the days that I am in person in the office, that is, every single day I'm logging into every bank account, making sure that I am not missing any fraudulent transactions. I am reachable every weekday by phone or email. Honestly, I answer on Saturdays and at night. I shouldn't, but I give out my cellphone to employees, because sometimes people really need to reach you. I follow a reconciliation schedule that keeps me on track. I am always done before the end of the following month. Not only is that easier to find mistakes, but it puts us in a good position for a fall special town meeting. I am pretty familiar with Tax Title. We had a large Tax Title case in Washington. It was this big Berkshire cottage, they were gonna turn it into a camp, the company that owned it kept going kind of in and out of bankruptcy, and after years of pestering them, we eventually got a $240,000 payment for all the back taxes and the interest and the fees. Two other things, are you currently using Positive Pay? I think we talked about this.
I actually don't know.
Okay. I would think probably. Positive Pay is a verification system where you download the check register and you send it to the bank.
Yes, she is using that.
One of the issues that you run into with people who are part-time and are checking the bank accounts every day is that if you make a mistake on the Positive Pay, or if an item comes through that, for whatever reason, the bank scans the name and it reads a little bit differently, it's a little bit confused by it, their default is to reject the check unless you call them and make sure that it's okay. You go into their portal and make sure it's okay.
No, we are using that because we actually lost four boxes of checks. We did not, our shipping vendor lost four boxes of checks, so we had an issue for a while.
Excellent. I also regularly do cash flow analysis. If we're running low on cash in a town of this size, I would say maybe if my general fund dips below $800,000, I'd automatically get one going, just to make sure that we're gonna have enough funds to get through. If we have to do an internal borrower, it's good to know that as early as possible. And then, the last thing that I think we should talk about is the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust. My understanding is you just switched over to this, right? So you just went through your Chapter 32B negotiations? I'm sure it was heated and tough.
It was, well, there's two unions that we...
There's two unions that we have to deal with. One is a small police union, frankly, they were on board.
Excellent.
That was very easy. Schools, on the other hand, were difficult. We did have some assistance from our superintendent to kind of get us over the goal line, but yes, we did eventually get there, and then we got the big surprise last month.
Yeah, it was tough. So I'm pretty comfortable with talking with employees, I've become, rather, very comfortable talking with employees about why this increase is happening. I have been investigating other options for other towns, that includes Maya, that includes the Group Insurance Trust with the state. There are pros and cons to each one. You know, the state trust doesn't, well, the state trust, the state acts as the insurer, which means that if there's a large claims year, and your claims are larger than your premiums, that the state is gonna make sure that the rates don't go up too much. But they don't offer Blue Cross Blue Shield, and that is a sticking point with unions, especially with the teachers' union. And they're not that much cheaper, anyway. With Maya, I have my own kind of personal concerns with them, because they treat each body, each town, as its own group. And you're not, I'm wrong. I think you know why I'm concerned by that. Who were you with before?
We were with Maya.
Right.
One of the things we did find out with Maya is they do, they will look at each individual town versus a trust, which is a flat across the board, everyone's treated evenly.
Exactly.
And generally, with the smaller communities, we don't get preferential treatment, let's just say that, especially from a cost perspective.
Yeah. Also, my concern with Maya is that if you compare it to a trust, A, the law of averages says you only have a 50/50 chance that your rates are gonna be cheaper. And B, in a smaller community, everybody's gonna know who has the large medical event. Everyone's gonna know exactly why their rates went up, and I just foresee some very unfortunate conversations or chatter with that. That said, I was not super impressed with the communication that the Group Insurance Trust had with the employees, you know, that letter that they sent out, I felt it was lacking. If you're interested, I just wanted to hand out, this is the letter that I sent out in Row, I composed it, and then added the new rates, and put in the kind of charts from the presentation, just to make everything a little bit easier to explain. And I'd be happy to do something like that for Brookfield. I think it's helpful to have that kind of information upfront. And again, I was not pleased with how they had explained this rate increase. That's the same one that I'm using in another town, by the way. One other thing which I was thinking, was I was taking a look at your audits, and I saw that for the last two years, you had the comment that you were tracking the health insurance premium deductions more closely, right? That falls on the treasurer's side. So I was just gonna call Scanlon, I was probably gonna call Matt, I don't know if he comes out here.
No.
No? I was gonna call someone over there and try to work out a spreadsheet that would meet their expectations for that, just so...
So we have since written off everything. The issue was from probably prior to six years ago.
Wow.
So, we've gone through multiple treasurers over the last six years, and due to the amount of retirees that we have, we have our health insurance ledgers set up with health insurance and our retiree communities. Most, I'd probably actually say half...
Most, I'd probably actually say half of our retirees are, they do counter pays. So they do not come in through retirement payments.
That's a little more complicated.
So the accounts just from switching treasurers and from counter pays not coming in on time. We have an issue prior to the six years of, probably prior to the four years. Unfortunately, we were paying for people who were deceased on our insurance bill.
Wow.
They're not caught by treasurers. It was cleaned up in the prior term. But we amassed a mess in the ledgers. So rather than write it off four years ago, I made it until this year when we got a better handle on it. And we cleaned up all of the withholding accounts.
And I believe that is one thing which the Hampshire County Trust does a little bit better than Maya's. In Maya, with Maya, you are pretty much solely responsible for your own administration. But with the Group Insurance Trust, they're at least keeping an eye out as well to make sure that if somebody passes away, they let you know to take them off.
Right. The other issue was obviously with Maya and it's still with the trust is we have retirees that are not actually of retirement age. So when they come through, they're not showing up on our medics plan. They show up still on family or single plans.
Right.
Those were being scored properly. So that was the issue we were... Other than that, our audits have been clean. We're done every year because we qualify for a federal audit.
They looked great. That was the only thing I could think to point out.
Yeah, so we use Scanlon. Jeff and Kyle come out every year to do the audit. We just finished '24 and it's been back in July to do the federal audit.
Sounds good. Yeah, I'm used to a annual audit with Scanlon. It just makes things so much easier. Can I roll into questions that I have now?
Absolutely.
Okay. Is bank reconciliation done through 630?
Uh, yes.
Perfect. Do you ever have any cash flow issues?
No.
No. Do you do quarterly taxes? Semi-annual?
Harper's handles all of our taxes.
No, I think it's property.
As a tax collector.
Oh, as the tax collector, do you do quarterly?
Quarterly, perfect. So you don't have to do any revenue anticipation notes or internal borrows. Good. Quarterly. Is your debt generally consolidated or do you have several different borrows?
We have one long-term. That, it has two items.
Perfect.
Well, technically two.
So you...
Small little Dan. I know it's so small, you don't even think about it. Sorry, it's nominal.
We have a modern trust still subject to...
USDA appears.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you had mentioned that you don't have to go out and borrow.
No.
Too often. That's good.
No.
If you ever do have to go borrow, I'm very experienced with that. I've done way more borrows than I should have had to have done. When you're switching to Harper's Employee Forward, are you making sure the department heads are tracking or are we making sure the department heads are tracking paid time off?
It's all being implemented, which is why we've been working on it for about six months. So all of the paid time off, everything's being put into the system. So we're at the last stage of verifying people's vacation time, sick time, personal time, and then putting in account numbers.
Excellent.
So when it goes live, everything will be actually accurate.
Sounds good. And is Harper's going to be tracking those accruals? Like every start of the year, they'll know how long. Perfect.
Yep, so we have it set to disappear vacation time in a certain date and that type of, yes.
What's the balance of the stabilization accounts?
I think there's about $100,000 in capital. There's like $850,000 in our school roof. And then about $600-ish thousand in general.
I thought it was closer to 630 or 680. I can't remember which. It's one of those two.
Six something.
Six something.
Six something.
Call it 650. Seems pretty good for a town of this size.
Yes.
Comfortable.
Yes.
Do you have any large projects coming up?
The school roof.
School roof?
Yes.
So you, did you do a bar over the school roof? You've just been saving up?
Yeah, we've saved.
Wow.
Yeah. That's why if you heard her, she said $850,000 in the school roof fund.
How long have you been saving up for that?
Two years.
Wow.
Which is why our capital's kind of sad, but just under $100,000. We took a little bit out of there to get it started, but other than that, we just haven't been using free cash.
Do you have a capital plan? Okay.
Not a current one. We, we actually managed to execute most of the one we did. We did one, we, we did one, actually, we did one eight years ago that, and then we drafted one five years ago, but that never got, never got accepted.
Right.
But we've actually mostly followed that non-accepted capital plan. So we're at the point we need to redraft and actually formally accept one.
I did forget to mention one other thing about me when I was going through my spiel earlier. My mother was a teacher. I think that that is important to mention just because there's often kind of headbutting between town halls and schools and teaching staff. And I've been fortunate not to have a lot of that tension. I think part of that is that the teachers understand that I know that what they do is important and that I value the work that they do. And that just helps at least get a foot in the door. We had talked about this a little bit, but how did the job become available?
Our current treasurer is a treasurer in two towns. She's made the decision that she just would like to keep the one that she's in, which, that she's been in. She filled a void for us when our prior treasurer quit with limited notice. She's been here just about a year and a half now.
And part of that decision had to do with the administrative burden on the HR side? Something along those lines?
That was some of it.
It's a piece of it, for sure.
Have you interviewed anybody or had interest in the HR side of that?
We had two applicants and the second one bailed on us today. So we're, we're still searching.
Still searching. That's difficult. And how long?
You don't want to flip-flop your application, do you?
Not quite. I like the financial side and the numbers side. I have done the administrative benefits administration, employee enrollment side. I'm comfortable with it, but it's not my preferred, yeah, preferred side. How long will the current treasurer stay on?
She's currently planning on leaving at the end of the first week of September. Hoping that we would find someone so she could have at least a few days of transition time.
What banks do you work with?
Well, all of our trusts are at Bartholomew.
Okay, excellent.
We, Unibank is our checking. Oh, we have a few other accounts at Unibank. North Brookfield Savings Bank. We've got a couple little tiny banks around here.
I think we might have.
Reston, North Brookfield. The majority of our money, though, is within Unibank and Bartholomew. And I know we're forgetting a handful of others, but...
Sounds good. Yeah, I know Unibank pretty well. What software does the tax collector use?
Vadar.
Excellent.
Yeah, we're fully integrated.
And is tax total being tracked through Vadar?
Yes.
Perfect. And is remote access already set up?
For Vadar?
For Vadar, yes. I think it's all cloud-based now, right?
Yeah, we're on cloud.
Okay. I think my last question really was when do you think you'll be making a decision?
Very soon.
Very soon? Okay. And when would you let me know?
I would say as early as early next week.
Yeah, I was going to say probably by Tuesday, Tuesday or Wednesday.
I think we'll meet Tuesday to discuss, and then Wednesday Ron would be notified. Or possibly Wednesday to meet and then before the end of next week.
Sounds good. Okay.
Well, you did a good job.
Thank you.
You had more questions than we did, and that's very interesting and good to see. And thank you for your presentation. Did a good job.
Thank you. I've been on your side of the table a number of times. So I have a whole lot of questions that I usually like to ask.
Thanks so much.
We will, we will let you know as, as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right, so do you need a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.